Okay, ready to go?
We're going to be doing some local business meetings for the United States. And local meetings for, uh, for. What are the reasons? Together with.
United States where? We're going to go, we're six years.
One hundred and eight.
We're calling, yeah, this is all. We're going to do this as well.
Um. You've got to have this one here together. Um, you know, a lot of your new girlfriend and your clients. Who are interacting with our. Um.
Sorry, I wasn't able to get these out any earlier. I'm still finishing.
And I thought I was feeling good, but she's away.
Okay, I went ahead and put her in because I had, I had the quote she had sent. So I just figured I'd wait till she sends the invoice, but at least it's good.
And she was the flower. But no, we'll take us.
Yeah.
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 They, uh. Deliver, say nine. Uh, depending on what, or if they. They're supposed to be called, or they're not supposed to be called. Uh, that was the original, you know, one of these.
Um. That was. Tech books and. For the, um.
For the real.
Yeah, for the, uh. Volunteer fire department. Yeah.
Is that the bus waiting or angles for training?
It's for the, uh, the fire department. It's on the fire department's part of their training budget.
Okay. One second. No, please. No, it's the water. No, 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 no. Four seven. Um. Did you guys like it? Yeah. We got better than. Yeah, sure. Well. Uh, we have a new business license, probably topic expires. This is really nice, so if you would, uh, to give you a copy, so, or if you want.
Okay. Um, so let me bring pictures of everything that we're all about that. Yeah. All of my, um, my name is Bruce, worked here recently, um, similar watching. Uh, there's four years. Um, we came back here because I have a very good. And we like fast mall. And I'm just looking at some of the best. Get that with kind of thing. Um, all of my parts, we did all the homework. Uh, saving the motor festivals, those ones from last time. And then I made all of those best ones that were. So I think a very, uh, nice sense, please, catching the vocal. So first vice plan, um, we also do some known, who just depends on people's likes and. Um. We did a very busy, a very few, kind of one of them. My side, my house, two customers coming in, just a couple of weeks. There was, obviously, I promise not to. Um, and my husband, my husband does that part of this, which is having to have fifteen percent. Um, but I mean, that was. And. Um. Other than that, I'm not sure, but you're like, no, I just wanted to try it.
Thank you.
Now, I'm, yeah, well, the.
That's.
Um. Well, very good, that's my part of what I can talk to you about in the past. Because I have had some suffering. It was, you know, online. Um, and there's no, uh, the, the office. But, um, we know that I'm on my way to, um. Definitely, but I was trying to. I'm hoping.
That's what I asked.
Yeah. Well, we have a beautiful person, we have friends, though. It's difficult.
Um. You have a question? Yeah.
Um, that's actually right across from the New York General. Um, the latest guy.
Oh, really? I know my.
Yes. That's.
What are you? What you? You do proud.
Right, yeah, well. Jenny and I, actually, myself.
Many hours in the morning, we start to do the party from coffee and spice. Um, that's. Um. On the sun.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, you are the hero. And you have a house. Yes.
If you want to, you're welcome to. You don't have to.
Do not. So you're very, very long.
Yeah.
Good morning. Um, we need to have a call, right, to be there, their name, uh, you know, that calls the lawyers, for this. And. Well, I think we're not, we're not putting our input. Any case, you have on the roof, uh, each and all, uh, sharing over there. Uh, especially by order of five nine dollars. And. Let's bring that to you. You can make things out there, uh, that you have to, uh, understand.
Yeah.
Um. So, um, yeah. It's about ninety thousand. The reply.
Well, I printed that out to bring over here and I can find it.
Um.
It's not, it's not that.
But, um. Do you think it's mainly upstairs?
It's mainly upstairs, but I thought. They were saying something about some of the, Mike.
Oh, just that?
Yeah.
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 Um.
I apologize, I cannot find the text.
Wait, what was it? I was, um.
I think we gave it a little bit of a result, where we got one of the. Uh, I'm sure that's all, that's me, but I think somebody does have an experience. In the small fashion. Your.
What?
So, uh, here. Yeah, there's my access system, uh, there's my, uh, small. We're up here, we're, uh, for, uh, for, uh, we're, uh, we're. We're, uh, we're, uh, all the time, we're doing, uh, uh, the ones that are, maybe you're able to pick up. It's like a state. Yeah. We find out who is, you know, you might have to.
Okay, no, I don't. I don't have it. I thought I had it printed out, but it's not with me.
Pretty sure we have eighty-five nine thousand.
I was gonna say, I, I know there was quite a bit, yeah.
Well.
This should. Yep, to be covered in that.
Really, really.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I was worried, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a, you know. One second. Sorry, no. Um. Um. Yeah. You can do more than that. You're always going to be. But you know, you're all one.
Yes. This is, um, the last one. I just copied it and put it in here, um, just so you could see what I was gonna do for. The updated one, for, uh, Sharon. You'll say Sean, no, Sharon. I, no, I didn't see anything that I would need to change.
Right, so you say you know that?
Yeah. And, uh, did we want to do one year or two year? This one was on two years.
So I remember a few years.
Okay.
Uh, everyone.
All right, I'll double check with Sharon.
Well. Yeah. Yeah. You know, people ask how, uh, the, uh, share, or, uh, I think, say, you have probably, uh. Um. Um, uh, yes. Um. Um. You know, the question. I'm not sure what the question is, but. For your son, guys.
Um.
One second. One second. And again. And. Um, moving on to the waste waterfront, and I want to first change for, uh. For ninety-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And. The law has to do with, uh, going into state of the home fund. And. Their requirements, you know, explosive groups, some of those are logical, that were fully. Uh, ventilation alone, with, uh, suitable litigation for. Um, gas and big, the other American ventilation out there, also. Part of the, uh, which was. Some, uh, electrical, which was not part of the original, they, they came up, they look. With, uh. Okay, so, uh, where is the first line, six, three, nine, six, seven, nine, nine, fifty dollars? So. You want, there's more when you. Um. There was something else to do. For the.
Donations accepted.
Um, whether required.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Question, you, uh, that was the whole. Would it does that delay the start time? So it's just creating that, I think. Yeah, okay. Right. Well. Whether it's on, you know. Right. I think it's a great question, though, something you have, but it's not that long. That you. Really good. So we'll stay there for a while, but I'm sorry. Over the, uh, I don't know, it's not, it's not like two. The contract, and then. Well, I think we're going to contract, yeah, for that.
I think so.
Because we, we added our.
Yeah. We have to do that first.
Have to. Then I have to over, I think October, November. October, November, depending on time.
I was gonna say October, yeah.
It's already.
Yeah. Yeah.
And you're. And when they have a two possible, then they will work out a first stage, and only find one. Basically, uh. Uh, money that will end up after you pay back, and then. Second, um, maybe, uh. Uh. Um. Um. Yes, you have any questions for that, or I just sort of, uh, for, 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 for. She's going to, not only. That was that. All them. Um. Um. Yeah, it's like that. We can go on some discussion, yeah. Uh, there are two subdivisions, that is on. I do believe.
Yeah, she stepped on it, I know that image.
I don't have it, it's a text. Superb.
Yeah, she just. This was the letter we needed to send to Barton, Bart Stakewood. And then she sent the other information. So she's updated, yeah, they changed the, uh, yeah.
So it's all about two, uh, so you can, you know, move, uh, uh, the.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just that, well, huh?
Yeah.
Um. And you have three years. In the, in the, in the, I must say.
Okay.
So we brought it back. Uh, within your convention, they, that's the deadline. But, um, for a whole nation, and, uh, for, uh, the, uh. Yeah, so, you see, so, yeah, basically, uh, you know, like, you know, until. We'll have to come through your council with, uh, with the final plan, so proof that, oh, okay, well, the conditions have been met, usually that's kind of the, uh, the final part, too. Okay, so, uh, very, very powerful, uh, approval, and then that one, you know, it's, uh. Well, then, then, uh, we're on the corner, like. Right. Maybe. Okay. Um. Um.
Just a reminder that the elections are November fourth, twenty twenty-five. The last time I checked, I think it was on Friday. We only have one candidate so far for mayor. We don't have any signed. Up yet for council. Oh, did you? Okay, see, I didn't see it on Friday, but.
I'm sure.
Oh. Okay.
Well.
It worked. At least that was, so that was on the website. Okay, so Scott, you have done it? Okay. Oh. Okay. Okay. I didn't get a chance to check today, but that was what I saw on Friday.
She saw, she saw.
Okay.
That's all. I don't.
Uh.
Yeah, uh, welcome, Governor, Review Committee in the city. I feel that.
We, yeah, we are down, we were hoping to get two. Yeah, at least two. We have gotten no. Uh, letters of interest, and I have not had a chance to send that to, um, Dan or, and Ashley to ask me about that, so. I wrote myself a note to do that. Yeah.
Well, I'm.
Uh.
Um. Anything else, one night?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, from the community, can you use that paper there? Uh, I think that's, uh, that's, uh, unfortunately, uh, work out. Everybody, it was, what is it, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's been, uh, cheap, lots of material, uh, stuff, but, uh. There has been some traction, so it's, uh, it's, uh, exciting, thanks to, uh, this stuff, uh, but, things seem pretty good, so, of course. We have to say, well, that's, uh, could be good. I believe. I'm in contract, so first one year, twelve-four, and we talked in the college, he is willing to do it.
Okay.
Who can, to, uh, I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, so, I told her, she was, she was on there, of course.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Um. Uh, apartment reports, um, on my end, uh, we get our following, three. Wednesday night, Thursday morning, kind of on weather, and the guy has flowers around, um, uh. Thursday, Sunday morning,ish, I think. And they were there, and they had a little box, it was really good, so I'm super excited that they're in the street. You know. And even pretty excited, because she's done, she's done a lot of positive things, where it's, it's, uh, so, you know, everything else, if you. You're really feeling that. Yeah. Um. So. And I'll see you later. I think it's, uh. Yeah, I thought, or he said, it's, uh. Um. They're a little, yeah, no. They do get. Yeah. My school, uh, follow, uh, season four. That's one of them. Yes. He was, uh, he kept a great game. In my, uh. Uh, in, in, in council. Um. 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 It's not good, around, you know. It's good. That's, uh. All right, so, we're training, uh, we need to, uh. At least, uh, the first day. So. Um. Even on the time, uh, for training, you hear, uh. Uh, for, uh, ours, coming up this, uh, this next month. Uh, so we're a little better understanding that, and so, there was a, really, uh, sore, and, uh, we found about, like, uh. Yeah, I just found out. And, uh, like, uh, like, uh, all the way, we, uh, uh, training, so, it's, uh, this idea, well. Um. And, uh, we started, uh, starting our, um. Regular, we was really less boring, and also for our apartment. Uh, vehicles, uh, that the world, there is, uh, so, uh, they. That needs to be worked on, at some point, uh, to get a hold of it. And I will, um, over, literally, just work with them, and, uh, I guess, about getting one of the, which will work to, uh. That might, I think, that's easy to do with that, in service, because it's pretty easy to do. Uh, and, uh, particularly, we have to, you know, have force, and if you could, if you find, get a couple of days, and, uh. And, and then, uh. So working on some brands, and, uh, working, uh, working wide. Uh, we're gonna start here, and put out, sort of, uh, like, you know, the, the program, here's, uh, uh, they call it. That field, and then, uh, we have good vehicle service, on a, it's all, and we, we, we assist. We, we have. Um. Okay, I think I asked, I mean, they, please, I've had, uh, so, I know. But who doesn't know one? Well, uh, so, one of them now, and, um. Ladies. Um, so, the, the, uh, so, they're, they're, uh, they're, uh, they're. Well, it's. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Well, I'm going to look, because I don't know. So. Yeah. Uh, I, I can see, because I went down, uh, down, like, you know. There's one that I hear, I want. Yeah. No. See that? Okay.
Would I have been, uh, would I have found that?
So, I think so. It's what I'm, uh, even just point out, you see, I'm like, yeah. Mm-hmm. No, no, my God. Well, yeah. Yeah. And there's gonna be a little, yeah. We love it, yes. And, uh, kind of, these, uh, so, we're gonna make more, come on, there's possible. Yeah, really, really, really nice clothes to be sent in, uh, the car, um. Maybe that was nice. There's, there's pretty, that kind of, uh, the.
Oh, I do. Do you have that thing on, you're both doing? That's why I keep asking you that. Why did the officer go down your?
I have, I have, I have. Okay. Yeah, um, so, uh, yeah, it's just, well. He does not, he does not have one yet. He could have been, you know, on fifteen, he had a boss, he had a, uh, underest. And, uh, when he gets, uh, you know, one of that, the test was such a wonderful thing, and so. That was the, the way. I wish he could have that. Uh, department reports, uh. It's pretty, pretty sad, uh. You know, we, I don't order, you know, what kind of order, for, for working in a partner. It's, 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 uh, you. Move down, a part of the other, a part of the other. So. Uh, yeah. That's not water. So, this is all. Yeah. Hmm. I hear all that's hard. Oh, awesome. Yeah, I'm working, yeah, I gather, uh. Uh, she's gonna, yeah. Uh, for words, I don't know, the guy's eleven, both center, they're writing some more of the weekend up there. Um, do you have a volunteer, Chris Carter, is knowing to follow, and it's moving up there? Or is, have you stopped by?
He stopped by, I gotta find which form it is, so. Yeah.
So, awesome.
And he's gonna try and touch base with Ward and the guys down there to. Go over the mower.
I think a little better to read for it, without the work, for the. Well, it's on. You know, down there, and we're outside town. And, uh, all straight corners. The park's up and around it, swashbuckling, going. Um. This farm, I think, I know. They just, uh, one of the, fuck farms. The one that was in violation of the, it was done. I can go, move, move by, turn the corner. When I first find, uh, that's the water main line. Yeah, you want to clean that out.
No, we, uh, find it there in the park.
Yeah, there, and that's what. Well, the part of that, too, that's, of course. So, that'd be my. Especially, uh, I don't catch anything, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I'm gonna, I don't know. The museum open this weekend. Maybe. And then. Uh, it should be open this Friday. Check school on Saturday, probably. Uh, that, when you have a lot of patients, or emails, for backup, that's very, uh. Yeah, this one. You don't hear them, you just want to pick that. But it's one of them.
No, not yet. I'm trying to get there.
Yeah, we need to go through and pick up some candidates, and then, all, uh.
I got with.
Um, you know, over.
I haven't emailed it yet, I got the email from. The testing that they had at, uh, job service. For before, so I just wanna make sure it covers everything we need. I was trying to flip through that here before we started the meeting. It's been a little busy. Because, yeah, I wanna send that to them and then go ahead and get the interviews set up.
Welcome, come next, we're ready to talk.
Let me. Just do, thanks. Um. One, I posted up there that I am closing the office tomorrow from two to three thirty. Because there's a budget, uh, prep, training. So, I wanna take that, and I can't, yeah, look. Um. And I don't have anybody, any other help in the office, so I'm closing for that. I'm thinking about closing for at least an hour and a, hour and a half every day if I don't have. Somebody in there, so. I don't know if we just, if I just say it's gonna be closed for an hour every day, even if there's somebody. Hmm, I don't know.
Four forty, we open at five.
Uh-huh.
Only delays is eight to four.
Eight to four for that? Okay.
Information for the boss.
Yeah, okay.
You try and, uh, going to four. Three, four, five, three, nine, drive time. Or do you?
No, the only thing I'm wondering on that, though, is because we, we've said for the key for the water. They have to, they can't pick it up after four. So that they can make sure to be back. Before we close at five. So that's the only thing that we might be cutting off.
More in, down there, at five, right?
At forty.
Whatever, so, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, um.
Um. So that, and then the other thing. Mike Legip called me today, he wanted to just make sure, he's trying to put together the schedule for people doing the concession stand. On July fourth. He says the council has normally done it from six to seven, or, sorry. Four to six. And, um. Wanted to know if you guys were still gonna try and do that this year, or? Okay. Right, I'll let him know. Yeah. Okay. Um, they're gonna do something different, they're not gonna do hamburgers this year, they're gonna do pork cor. Well, that's what they said, they're, they're trying to set it up as, yeah, as kind of a, a simply line, easier process. Let's see. So, there you go.
You know, for me?
I don't think so.
Yeah, we have a mail, uh, for a person, I think, you want me to answer that, so. It's just about the general, the honor, I'm hurting people, yeah. But it's four dollars, it's something, that's good, they don't have a grant. Uh, I will call the hand, uh. Samson, uh, conversation was going about that, I talked with Joe Crowe, Joe has talked to him, made him aware of the situation. But I was just like, a follow up with that.
You know, that whole section, that's still in between first and second. Come on, we're looking for, that, that pit holes in the road, they're. They're destroying it.
Yeah, I did talk with Joe Crowe about that, and how we, and, uh. We did have a conversation with, uh, the. We're following General, it's a year, we're just talking about, uh. Tranche, but outside, it was like, what? We just want to follow, I don't know, you know, the, uh. Uh, we see, we got, call, phone call, probably one, and then two, or. But, uh. Lowered, there's a contract, and, uh. There's no other. And if, I'm coming for a town hall, and we'll call on cases. So, all that, yeah, specifically on you, right? Yeah. There we go. Uh, for most, there's a, uh. That's right. What's that? Uh, so, I'm struggling, so, I'm going to go.